It is 7:00 PM. This is October 5th, 2022. This is the Committee of the Whole Meeting for District 96. Kathy, can you call the roll?
Mr. Rossavi.
Present.
Ms. Gunn.
Here.
Ms. Cyberg.
Here.
Ms. Marple.
Here.
Ms. Merhead.
Here.
Ms. Murphy.
Here.
Ms. Mutt. Here. All right, first on our agenda, we have a Welcome to Hollywood School from Principal Kim Hefner.
Good evening, Board of Education Superintendent Martha Ryan-Toye. I just want to welcome you to Hollywood School. This year, here we are at the beginning of October, and I can't tell you what a wonderful start to the year it has been. It's been amazing, the joy of being together. We're not completely out of the pandemic, we're well aware of that, but to be able to start moving forward again and the initiatives that we had began to implement three years ago has been an amazing thing. At Hollywood and throughout the district, we've been focusing on social-emotional learning this year. And at Hollywood, you know, it's the only single-section school, so it is a little bit different here. Our children have been together for six years, the fifth graders have been together for six years. They're truly like siblings, the best and the worst of siblings. And so this year, our theme is "We Are a Rainbow of Possibilities." And we are working with SEL, we have, like many of the schools in the district, we've adopted themes for every month. And as part of that theme, on Mondays at 2:20 every week, we either have a town hall meeting where we bring the whole student body and all the staff together in the gym to learn about whether it's teamwork and respect, which was September's theme, or this month is responsibility. They together learn a little bit about those things. But we work really hard to bring the different grade levels together because while children at Ames or Central or Blythe Park have the opportunity to meet new people every year and they get to develop those kind of social muscles of meeting new people, introducing themselves, showing people who they are, that doesn't happen at Hollywood very often. And so the first meeting of the month is a town hall meeting where they are exposed to the theme, this month being respect and just, I'm sorry, responsibility. And then the next Monday at 2:20, they get together with their reading buddies. And this year, the teachers have decided that kindergarten meet with fifth graders, which is just wonderful because these fifth graders who have been together forever and they can be super tough and cool, you see them become normal human beings. And so nurturing and caring and excited about our littlest learners at Hollywood. First grade is meeting with third grade. And similarly, they do a reading buddy activity and then they'll do another academic, usually something that needs to be wrote, whether it's letter names or letter sounds or multiplication facts, they work on those things together. And then second grade is with fourth grade. And so the second Monday of the month, they do their reading buddies in something academic. And then the third Monday of the month, they do reading buddies and then something related to our theme, which this month again is responsibility. So they'll do an activity to learn more about responsibility together. But it's building those cross-grade level relationships, which has just been, to watch them blow and they're just so excited about this time together. And we are too, because it is just continuing to build those relationships and those connections. So anyway, I hope you see, I hope you've seen around the building some of the Rainbow of Possibility things, some of the respectful, responsible and safe things, but welcome to Hollywood. Thank you for all that you do for us.
All right. Thank you. All right, next item is a public comment. Is there any public comments? Kathy, I don't know if you heard me or not?
She's checking.
Checking, okay.
There was none.
All right. Okay, then are there any proposed changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda, but I just want to look forward to them. I do have to leave a little bit after eight, so I will be leaving a little early.
So hurry up.
Yeah, so hurry up.
Yeah, talk fast then.
It's a joke.
It's a good joke.
All right. All right, anything else? If not, we will move on to board member comments. Anything?
No comment.
All right, well, then we will move to committee reports. First off is Education Committee.
Yeah, it's really not for me to talk about. I will kind of pass it on to Ms. Angela. It's a lot of the things that we've been talking about for a few months. So the social-emotional learning and how we're going to use e-learning days, that was a talk we had especially right before a pandemic. So I'll push it to Angela because she's much better at this.
Actually, Angela will push it to Pam and Nora. We'll push it to April.
Sorry. No, I had forgotten that SEL was for, thank you, so Pam and Nora, thank you. Yeah.
Yeah. And I'll just say, you know, social-emotional learning, as you just heard from Kim, is certainly a multifaceted topic and approach in terms of what we do here. So April was going to share a little bit about upcoming parent night and how we're working with a consultant and also introduce a new colleague.
Well, the most important is to introduce you to our newest staff member, Lily Beth, the Hauser therapy dog. And she has her handler here is Nicole Lee, who is also a parent in our district as well. And we, pre-pandemic, had aspirations of getting connected and it just never happened. And I think it was last spring, as you were picking up or dropping off one of your kids, I always talk about the dogs that are greeting and, oh, can I talk? And that's when I realized, oh, that's Lily Beth. We've been trying to talk to one another for a couple of years. So through the summer, just talked and through her volunteering, Lily comes to Hauser every Monday, Wednesday and Friday. And she greets the students in the mornings. And she is there to tell them goodbye and have a good evening in the afternoons. She makes everything better. I think, I know Nicole has a couple of things to say. My best was one day early on, in the morning, we're outside greeting kids and a kid came up and he saw Nicole standing there with Lily and he's like, yes, it's dog dick. We've hit it.
Mission accomplished.
Yeah, I know, I think you wanted to share.
Yeah, I have a couple of stories that probably will make me cry, but I'll try not to. A few, I mean, I have been, like, everything approached from the kids to parents outside of school. So we were at the Central Fun Night and I had a few parents stop me and say, oh my gosh, my kid was having the worst day, was super crabby, didn't want to go to school and then saw that Lily was there and he got a huge smile on his face and she was like in tears. And it was just, I mean, that was amazing because I worked, I'm in LCSW and I used to work with kids with school refusal. And so I was like, well, that's a motivator, right, to get them to come out of the car. And then there's another, another boy who told me the other day, he just really looks forward to this because a lot of times his mom rushes him in the morning and he just gets really crabby in the morning and then he comes to school and he starts his day with Lily. And I was like, whoa, sweet. Another one of this one, there was one of the boys, she sometimes will do this, you'll see her when I was just sitting there, she'll do this and she wants you to rub her chest. And she did this to him and he's like, the next day he came up to me and he's like, I think she healed me. Like his knee hurt and I was like, oh my gosh. Now that's like his story, whenever he sees Lily, he's like, she healed me. Gosh, I'm forgetting, there's one more. He healed me and then, anyway, my point is, it's been absolutely amazing. She, she will go into the school and you'll see like the little kids will want to like run to her and try and get her attention and then she like stays with one, there's one little boy that she just has really bonded with and she, I'm like, you kind of got to move away from him. So anyway, it's been an absolute pleasure. I really want to say thank you to letting me do this, both of you. Like, it's been absolutely incredible. I remember when I had to go meet with you, I was like, oh, she's totally going to say no, I'm never going to be able to do this.
She doesn't know how many dogs I have in mine. Now she does, I know, what a dog lover I am.
Yeah, no, it's been absolutely amazing. And this has been a dream of mine for literally 25 years when I used to work at Lurie's Children's and I ran the Rainbow Dog Program there. And so just, I think we were like not able to connect then and then it all happened the way it was supposed to. So thank you.
Well, thank you because Nicole volunteers her time and she volunteers Lily Beth's time. And also Lily Beth has been through some rigorous training. Do you want to touch on that for just like a minute or two?
Yeah, absolutely. So she started out with like regular dog obedience training in Oak Park. And then that was a few years ago. And then since then, has been involved with what's called Pet Partners, which is the standard national, my son is here.
Let him in, let him in.
I'll let him in.
Lily, you might as well see Charlie. You see Charlie? There's Charlie.
Hi, buddy.
She knows the name.
So anyway, she went through Pet Partners and had to go through, I had to get trained with Pet Partners. And then after I got trained, then she, she was able to go through the training. She had to go through some serious testing and then we went to Hinsdale Humane Society and got certified through them as well to do animal assisted activities.
She's just really good. Oh, my goodness.
She's the one boy that she likes to work with.
Yeah, yeah, the boy must be named Wes, I'm guessing.
I was not expecting that.
She's like, that's what we're doing at night. She, she knows your daughter. She needs energy, so you know. So yeah, so she, I had to get trained and then she had to get trained. But it was like training throughout like with like wheelchairs and walkers and elevators and just making sure that she was exposed to anything and everything that could come her way. I was saying earlier, one of the parts of training was like everyone had to bombard her and with like, with a walker and then someone running and going this way and charging at her and like they needed to see how she would react. And I was like, when is that ever going to happen? Well, the first day of school. All of that. But no, she's been great. She's, we have this, we call this her working collar. And she was trained from the beginning. I always wanted to have her be a therapy dog. And so whenever we were training, she had this on. And now she just knows if we ever take that off, she would like run up to all of you. Lots of good training for us, I think you have to train the human before you train the dog. Kind of like therapy.
Any questions or comments?
No, thank you for mentioning that.
Yeah, thank you so much. It's stuff that's wonderful.
My absolute pleasure.
We're hoping to grow it some more, into maybe some groups with, you know, social work groups with kids, even just hanging out in the office. If, you know, somebody did need a little boost or, you know, a little good luck pet before a test, that she would be available.
Absolutely.
Her endurance has been building as well with her working, so.
Yeah, we were surprised how tired she was after the first few days. She was exhausted. But she's been building up and she's like, I'm ready for more now. Yeah, it's been really, there was actually, that was, I think, the other example was that the little, one of the kids came up to her and said, it's my lucky day when I touch her, so.
Yes.
She gives hugs. I wish we had like five or six of her.
I know.
Yeah, I was going to say, will Lily ever make cameos at any of the others at the schools? Right, right now she's a Hauser dog. It's always one middle school, so.
No, and you have other things I'm sure you need to do, but thank you so much.
Working is totally overrated. I would love to like get her to be able to do, not like crisis work, but I mean, like, yeah, something along those lines of like a child who's having a hard time at school where you guys could like, we talked about this a little bit, like call me and I'll run over if I can, just to kind of see if she can assist with some, what I call like reducing the worry or inflammation of the nervous system. So like really trying to calm your nervous system and animals are proven to do that. And so it's just, I think, a really cool way. Who was talking about health class? Was that, I think, one of you were talking about health class, but like incorporating her into a health class or like some kind of system where like people learn about the nervous system through the dog and they could see like different examples of her getting riled up or excited and then how do we calm our nervous system? So that's a long-term goal that I would love to do, but we have to work in the meantime.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us so much. It's nice to meet everybody.
Get this young man home.
Yes, I have this one and another one coming home from football.
We're doing for coming out tonight.
Thank you. What's that?
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you for having us. Say bye, Lily. And then she gives, oh my gosh, she gives fist bumps. And then we stand when they all go to school and we say, fist bump. She's like, yeah, no, I'm not doing that right now. It's not time to. And this is Charlie.
Charlie.
Thanks for coming.
Right up the door.
Then I think also just wanted to share a little bit what's coming up with Carrie Goldman that we've contracted with. She's going to be offering a parent evening, actually next Wednesday, so a week from tonight, at seven o'clock in the Hauser auditorium. And she's going to be covering a little bit about social conflict, how social media works into that and bullying. So should be a really great evening of learning for adults. She's also going to be working with the Hauser staff on October 24th, one of our extended PD after-school times and working on, we started with her, maybe 2017, I think, doing circles and discussions. And so we are getting back into that this year and she's coming to help staff with that. And then on Wednesday, the 26th of October, she's going to do assemblies for our students. So some SEL for staff, for families, and then also for students coming up.
Now it's the goal, now it's the goal champion.
That was a very stealthy.
You guys bring a cat or an hamster by chance or anything?
So just a little update on Goal Two of the Strategic Plan, Learning Environment and Culture. Some updates, I think you all received the memo. Just to summarize that in general, we've really been working, continuing that work on that systemic approach to social-emotional learning. This summer, the district leadership team had Minister Your Academy on the systemic approach and how we look at that in order to make sure that SEL is embedded in everything we do and that it is something that's not just a one and done, that is something that we continue to look, look at and look to improve. Our SEL professional development, our first 75-minute PD was on responsive classroom. Is that, that is the approach that we're looking at. It was very well received and we're going to be doing a follow-up to that professional development on November 7th. And the pairs actually will have a little bit of what they miss because they're not part of those 75-minute PDs at our institute day next week. And we're continuing to work with Sharon Fries on this work. The team met actually yesterday in planning for a future PD. And we also talked about the data, the initial data that we took last spring and that then the administrative team took and the data really matched one another. It was interesting and a very good thing that, you know, Sharon pointed out too, that the teachers and staff and administrator all see us at the same kind of foundational pieces as we move forward. And we are going to be administering the PAST screener, which I think I've discussed before, social-emotional learning screener, second through eighth grade, with our first screener done in October, then we'll repeat it again in March. And we're getting some baseline data for that. And then on October 27th, we're going to have four vendors present some SEL curriculum for us to review. Pretty much an update. Any questions?
Could you remind us what the PAST screener is?
Oh, I have to stop in. It's the people attitudes towards self and school. So. Yeah, go ahead.
It's really looking at student sense of belonging in the school. It's questions like, I see myself as, you know, school is hard for me, I like going to school. So questions about that, like themselves as a learner, but also there's a question, you know, I have an adult I can trust in the school or I feel like people in the school know who I am. You know, just kind of that sense of connectedness and ability as a learner, you know, how they perceive themselves as, I try when things get hard or I know who I can ask for help, those kind of questions.
So then by doing this twice in the year, we're kind of looking for positive, just looking at change and?
Yeah, I think we're really looking at the first administration, just to see like what is the baseline? You know, what, how are students feeling? And then are there general themes either at the district or at the building level of, we're seeing, everyone's kind of rating this a little bit lower, how can we kind of help to build that up? And then, yeah, obviously our, our hope would be that we are seeing improvement and more connectedness across the year.
And just as we use MAP to plan for English Language Arts and we use that to plan for math, this will help us plan for SEL too, to see what areas we need to help children grow in.
Thank you.
Was this the tool that's also kind of like an early flag indicator of some of those like unseen things? Or was that something else of like, if people are, if people are kind of, or students are kind of negative?
The kind of more internalizing things versus externalizing the red flags are the behaviors. Yeah, this would give us just a little bit more insight if there's someone who might just be kind of quietly making their way through the school day but don't feel like they have what they need or that they have someone that they trust in the building or that they have friends in the building, you know, that kind of sense of, okay, well, I'm just, I'm here and I'm not making a lot of noise or anything, but I could still use some support in different ways.
Yeah, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. So the first thing I wanted to talk about is the e-learning plan for Riverside District 96. A few years ago, 2019, November of 2019, we approved an e-learning plan where we had decided we would send packets home with students and have them complete paper packets. And little did we know about four months later, we would learn another way to teach at home.
I think February 2020, a colleague came and said, I don't think we had to use the e-learning days.
That's right.
Curses.
Three, we had chosen two.
Yes, and we didn't use any. There was not a bad winter storm there.
Right. There was no winter storm.
Well, I think we'd limit it to five anyway, right?
Yeah.
We chose three of the five that were available.
That year we did, yes.
We exceeded that.
Just a bit.
So you have to renew your e-learning plan every three years and we've come upon that time. And so with the renewal, we are looking at, the e-learning plan will outline for everyone how Riverside District 96 would utilize e-learning days. And we first would notify students and families of an e-learning and staff members of an e-learning day upon notification of any type of emergency closing, whether that's weather or some other opportunity that caused us to have an emergency closing. That communication would be sent to all families via email, via phone blast and also posted on the website and staff members would also receive an email blast. Our students in kindergarten through second grade receive an iPad at the beginning of the school year. Our students in third through eighth grade receive Chromebooks at the beginning of the school year. We utilize learning management systems in our district, as most, all of you know. Kindergarten through second grade utilize CSO and third through eighth grade utilize Schoology. And so our e-learning plan incorporates the technology that we have, K through eight, as well as those learning management systems that we have, K through eight. Anybody who isn't able to access on an e-learning day, access the internet, whether it's because of the weather or because they don't have internet access at home, paper materials would be available to the best of our ability depending on the emergency closing reason. But all due dates would also be adjusted to accommodate for that inconvenience. A student's experience in an e-learning day should be equivalent to a regular school day and that's per the code for e-learning days. And so students would need to have, what would equate to about a five-hour experience? We are looking at that being both synchronous, so in, live instruction, as well as asynchronous, independent work that students would do off-screen. At the pre-kindergarten level, our early learners would spend time with live instruction for morning circle and read aloud time. And then they'd have interactive activities that they would be able to do offline. Our kindergarten students, while we do have full-day kindergarten, it's not realistic to think kindergartners would be on screen for three hours. So kindergarten students would be, receive synchronous instruction for an hour and 35 minutes, which would be morning, would be morning meeting, would probably be phonics, literacy instruction as well as mathematics instruction. And then they'd receive independent work assigned through CSO that they'd be able to do for the remainder of their day. That independent work might include Lexia as well as our math curriculum, iReddy's My Path. They're independent, the independent learning for our math program. First and second grade students would receive three hours and 10 minutes. And it's actually first through fifth grade students would receive three hours and 10 minutes of synchronous instruction. What that means is that they'd be on screen for their morning. Their break would come at their normal lunch hour break, so I think it's 11:25, that they would end up taking, they'd come off of the live instruction, they'd have their lunch break and then they would be able to work on their independent work, which might be extensions from the morning work. It might be Lexia, My Path from iReddy, it might be science, social studies. Fifth graders might have band lessons that they might need to do. And then our elementary students who had a special area class that day, if they had that scheduled for the morning, they would have attended that special area class. The special area teacher will join their Zoom call during that morning session and they'll have their math, their music, their art or their PE class that morning. Sixth through eighth grade students will receive four hours of synchronous instruction. They'll go through their whole periods, all their periods for their schedule so that they're seeing their core and encore teachers. They would have 25 minutes for their classes with 50 minutes for mathematics and language arts. And so after their four hours of synchronous instruction, they would then have their lunch break and then work on their independent activities. And those independent activities for kindergarten through second would be on CSO and for third through eighth would be through Schoology. Teachers would be available throughout the afternoon for any questions that students might have. Teacher or students, families can reach teachers through CSO, Schoology, email or that's pretty much it, right, with technology ability to ask questions. And they'd be able to, their teachers are supposed to be available then for that afternoon so that they can ask questions as they're working on their independent work. And then students who receive additional support, whether it's English Language Learners or math interventions, reading interventions, special education, those teachers would reach out to their students to talk about their scheduled times for services. So that's our e-learning plan in a nutshell. Our next steps then are to have a public hearing at our, on October 19th. And then the board would vote on an e-learning resolution at the October 19th board meeting. Are there any questions for me?
So just to clarify, the only reason we foresee at this moment we would use these are weather-related, nothing other than that or other, other.
Pandemics, no, I'm just, I'm just kidding. Help, emergency declarations by the government, things we never anticipated prior to.
Yes, yes, not to be said, but understood, but in all realistic scenarios in front of us now, I guess, are we getting, are we closer back to a scenario where we first passed this? Where we're looking at, you know, weather-related, something, I don't know, some other kind of calamity but not necessarily a pandemic?
Snow, you know, we've heard about, I think there was a time or a time where flood was an issue.
Cold temperatures.
Bitter cold, yeah, so, but yes, I think those more traditional emergent, school emergencies that would cause to close schools.
Staff couldn't reach the building or the roads are inaccessible or, yeah.
And I know last time, the, as the board said, we would allow three of those five days to be that. Are we leaning that now or with things changing so much where remote learning is more normalized? The resolution I was going to present to the board has up to, has the up to five days for emergency learning. I feel that now that we have something of a higher caliber, more rigor than packets going home, that to continue instruction and knowing we can teach through synchronous instruction, to continue instruction at that time would be more beneficial than tacking on days at the end of the year.
I don't know, this might be a dumb question, but I know some of the technology, like some of the Chromebooks aren't necessarily coming home every day yet. aren't necessarily coming home every day yet, and certain grade levels. So as we get closer to the potential inclement weather, will there just be all grades will be bringing home, whether it's their Chromebooks or their iPads?
So our primary kids most likely won't be bringing their iPads even once they're able to start bringing them home. They won't bring them home most days. But what we do is, we're watching the weather, and when we notice that there's going to be inclement weather, there's a prediction for inclement weather, we do as a district leadership team, and as building principals, talk to the staff members and say, make sure you're sending your devices home with your students in the event that we may have to have an e-learning day.
So we did that, I think, last year once. I think that was the time it didn't snow as predicted. But, yeah, so, so devices would go home, just as Angela said, we would hope to predict that. If it was a more unpredictable situation, we'd potentially be asking families to come to the school early in the morning and pick up their child's device, which then requires, you know, staff and parents to be out in what we have, you know, identified as probably not the best weather. But we do know that sometimes it's about children that are walking long distances to school, and we'd hope that an adult would be able to arrive and get their device to them, so.
And again, we'd make adjustments with due dates and everything as necessary.
So I do have one question, just sort of, I, I know most people like have internet access these days, but I guess for those few that don't, is there ever talk of like, especially if, we know it's going to be like a bitter cold day for like a couple days in a row, or there's going to be snow, but like getting hotspots out, or some sort of technology like that? Seeing that generally things, these things are, I don't want to say planned, but we know we might have a little advance notice.
So we did an analysis of that during the pandemic. Don, do you want to speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, we, well, during the pandemic, we identified the students that didn't have access, and, and those students, they still have the hotspots. Yeah, we haven't collected them, so.
I remember it being very few, though.
Yeah, it was less than one percent.
And then we were sharing how to get lower cost internet, and so we really did, our social workers reached out, I think our principals reached out initially, like we really did some fairly significant outreach to the families that we felt that that was a potential barrier for their ability to connect.
And we can check that data too, we do ask it every year during registration.
But, yeah, you're right, they shouldn't be sitting there with nothing. It's not fair.
Well, I appreciate, I think, your major theme, I don't want to speak for you, of flexibility. That's at least how I'm reading it as a parent, at least knowing we have some options, so, thank you.
Thank you.
So we have to get to day six before the kids can go sledding.
They can still go sledding, even on an e-learning day. And often our teachers did, though, there have been times where teachers have talked about, they would incorporate time to enjoy those winter-type activities, right? So reading in a nook, in your, in a warm nook in your house, or going outside and building a snowman and taking a picture of it. So the teachers would get creative to offer those, offer students opportunities to be outside and enjoy that, if, if that's their thing. It was not my thing as a child.
I, I know one of my child's teachers did that for one of those days, and she was so excited. Oh my gosh, I'm supposed to look out the window and draw, I forget what it was for art class. So I appreciate, there are teachers that do it.
Ours did the snowman, post a picture to CSO, you know, on a day that wasn't so frigidly cold, that you could get out there and do that. I think, yeah, PE, yeah, told them to go out and run around in the snow and. Snowball fight.
All right.
Moving on to curriculum.
Yes, to the next point.
So we're about six, seven weeks into the school year, and we have a new full-day kindergarten program, we have a new math curriculum, and so I wanted to take this opportunity just to update the board on a general curriculum update. So starting with full-day kindergarten, we are about six, seven weeks into full-day kindergarten. When I asked some of the kindergarten teachers what they, what word they'd use to describe full-day kindergarten, looking for positives, negatives, whatever it might be, the answer I got repeatedly is time, the gift of time. They really are so happy to have a full day, to be able to offer time for exploration, time for innovation, time for kids to have that socially-emotional learning opportunities. One teacher specifically had said, like, everything felt so rush, rush, rush last year, and now it doesn't feel like they're rushing kids to do this, now move on to the next thing, do this, now move on to the next thing. They're actually, they have the time now to fully dive into the activities that they're doing for each subject. There are a few challenges. I think the biggest challenge right now is that they don't have all their materials. My secretary, Robyn, and I are working on that, because we are six to seven weeks into the school year, and they should have those materials. Due to shipping problems, due to back orders, that's why it's been delayed, but we continue to work on that. But that does make it hard for a teacher to be able to fully implement a program, and so I'm also working with them on what are we doing in the meantime. Our next steps of full-day kindergarten are, we're going to reconvene the full-day kindergarten team, so that we can have monthly meetings to problem-solve things that are coming up, to talk about what's working, to collaborate as a team, so that they're talking with each other, but also to have our early learner teachers join us if they choose, to talk about more play-based instruction opportunities and ideas and suggestions. So we'll continue to meet, so that we can continue to collaborate and continue to grow as a team. We started a new math curriculum this year at K through five, our elementary classrooms. We're using the iReddy Classroom Mathematics Instruction. So many things are going well with this. We are seeing more small-group instruction, center instruction, and then we have independent learning with the online My Path series. That online My Path is not a replacement for instruction. It's, the recommended use is 30 to 49 minutes a week, so when you think about that, that's about 10 minutes a day, which is what some teachers have them doing during center time. So maybe I'm working in a group with the teacher, and then my friend is working at the desk playing games, math games, and another friend might be at their desk, working on their My Path, individualized path. So it's not a replacement for instruction, but it is something that's utilized often during small-group instruction. The amount of resources that teachers are finding to supplement or to help with their instruction, there's such a wealth of resource that I continuously hear from teachers, like, there's so much, I don't even know where to start. So we've had professional learning for all grade levels, first to fifth so far. Every week I meet with a grade level with our MCMI coach, and we, through that, have talked to him about during these, this first year of implementation, during this first few months, these are the things that you need, these are the top priorities. If you want to explore other things, by all means, please do, but here's the basics, here's the foundation. And that professional learning by grade level has been very helpful. All the survey results afterwards have been positive and just very appreciative of the time we're spending on helping them become more familiar with instruction, with the resources, with the materials. An area of challenge, though, is the routine for iReddy Classroom Math. And the routine for iReddy Classroom Math is called Try It, Discuss It, Connect It. And so with Try It, students are making sense of a problem that's presented to them with their classmates. They're looking at the vocabulary words, looking at what important information's in the problem, looking at what's the problem asking them. And then they try the problem on their own and use strategies that they have from their prior knowledge of mathematical concepts. But the challenge there is that our teachers are so used to direct instruction. So I stand, I tell you how to do the math problems, I explain to you the strategies that you can use, and then you go off and you try it on your own, but that's the reverse. Now we want kids to learn by exploring and by trying and persevering to do it on their own first, and so we're working with our staff members on changing that mindset and flipping that, so that kids are trying it first. The Discuss It part, students are sharing their strategies with a partner, and they're using sentence starters that we provide to launch conversations. And they engage in a whole, then they engage in a whole-class discussion about the selected strategies they use, they talk about how their strategies might have been different, or the same, or what worked, or didn't work. And so the challenge there is our students are not all used to that student discourse, that student conversation. We're working on building their capacity to make sense of problems and to persevere. So asking each other, or asking the students questions, like, did anyone get a different answer? We're working on their ability to reason, explain, and critique answers. So questions like, does your partner's answer make sense? And then we're also working on reflecting and connecting on the strategies that they use by asking questions like, what is different about your and your partner's strategies? And so that's, those are newer concepts for some of our students, and that's one of the challenges that some of our teachers have said, is that our students just don't have the math vocabulary yet. But that's yet, and I continue to enforce and work with the teachers, reinforce with them that they're teaching them this, and that we're going to work together on it. And there are resources through iReddy Classroom Math, like discourse cards and a discourse cube you can roll, and it has a prompt on it, that will help them with those math discussions. And then the Connect It part of the routine is just where students are answering questions about the strategies that, and representations that they've seen and that they've used, and then they're applying them to problems that, to newer problems, applying the strategies they learned to new problems. So that routine has been somewhat of a new thing for teachers to learn, but they continue to grow with it. And so with our next steps for iReddy Classroom Math, we'll continue our professional learning, we'll continue our weekly meetings by grade level with the MCMI coach. We're going to have instructional observations after winter break, where grade-level teachers will observe another teacher at their grade level teaching the class, and will talk about the student learning that's happening, and talk about the moves we're seeing being made, and discuss what's working, and the teacher who did the lesson will pose any questions that they might have that they want their colleagues to assist with. And then we also have iReddy Classroom Mathematics coming on Institute Day next Tuesday to do a session with all our kindergarten, fifth-grade teachers, our advanced learning teachers, and our math interventionists. The next thing I want to talk about is science.
Real, is it real quick, just, you may have said it and I just didn't hear it. Where does the direct instruction come in? Is that in the Discuss It part? Like, you discuss it with and like direct on?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So they discuss it with their partners and peers, and then they discuss it as a whole class.
Okay, so it's two parts, okay.
And at that point, the teacher is guiding the students and talking about the strategies. When they were discussing with partners, teachers would be walking around and monitoring. So you're pulling up students who either did the, did the work correctly, or might have done it incorrectly, but really close. That way you can also have that conversation about, well, what do you notice that's different from yours and this one? And so the teacher's guiding the discussion, but through that discussion, that's where the teachers instruct those students on how to do the problems.
So it's just more interwoven in the activity, rather than lecture and then apply?
Correct, yeah.
Would you equate that to an inquiry-based lesson, like they discuss in science, or do you find it a different nuance?
I, you know, I would, in a lot of ways, equate it to inquiry-based, where students are solving a problem on their own first, and then discussing how they got, how they got that solution, or why they got to where they, to their answer. I should stop in between each one, any other math questions?
There's also the parent piece, which has been really helpful. I have a third and fifth grader, and so every unit, or I don't know if it's called a unit, but every new chapter, what have you, that they cover, they do send the, you know, corresponding information home for parents. And we put it on our fridge, and whenever the math homework comes home, we have something that we can also look at to be like, oh, that's how you do partial whatever, or, you know, the area.
And once the devices start coming home, parents will have access to more resources too, through their students' dashboard. You'll be able to see how your students are performing on online quizzes and on their unit assessments as well. And then you'll also be able to access instructional videos if there ever comes a time that you want to help your child with their math work, and they're like, I don't know how to do this. There's tutorial videos that students can access through their dashboard, but you as a parent can also access. So once the devices start coming home, then we're going to send communication out on how you can access that as well.
My issue's been, I know how to do this, but I'm using different words. No, Dan, that's not how you do it. No, it is, just using a different language.
Right, or they're breaking it into tense in a different way, or area method, yeah.
I heard that at home too. That's not how you do it at home. I am an educator. Other math questions? So then science. We currently have defined learning as a science resource, but it was implemented beginning in the 2018-19 school year. And by implement, I mean actually professional learning had started in 2018-19 school year for elementary teachers. With the plan for it to finish in the 2019-2020 school year, but as we know, the pandemic happened, so not everybody was trained in defined learning. We also had a lot, not a lot, we also had turnover, and so new staff members came, and we still hadn't had the opportunity to have professional learning with defined learning. So we have teachers who are using defined learning units for science, but not all of them have been trained on the platform, so there is a little bit of a lack of understanding there. So before we look at new science curricular resources, we have a science review team of nine teachers that represent every grade level, K through five, and every elementary school building. We are actually being retrained on the defined learning platform, so that we have a full understanding of the platform and its uses, and how it can support our students' learning, before we decide, no, we need another program. And so we're spending the next three months working with defined learning trainers, so that we have the understanding, and then the nine teachers on the team will go to their classroom and actually teach a unit, will come back together in a month, talk about what worked, what didn't work, what questions they still have, and then we'll make a decision about whether or not defined learning does meet our science instructional needs. If it does meet our science instructional needs, then we'll determine what lessons at each grade level would be taught, so that we can ensure vertical alignment. If it doesn't meet our needs, then after winter break, we would start exploring other science resources.
Has defined learning updated their curricular pieces in the interim after 2019?
They've added, they've updated their platform, because it was really cumbersome beforehand, and so they've updated it and streamlined a lot of items to make it a little bit easier to navigate. And then through that process, they've also added new units in the different science strands. Connected to that is STEAM. So previously, we explored STEAM programs, WAZED, which is West, the West 40 Regional Office of Education. West 40's service organization has sponsored WAZED, supports WAZED, has connected many of the West 40 districts with the WAZED program. So we explored that, we went to our professional, we being me, Sarah Hickey and the librarians, went to a professional learning session about WAZED lessons and units and kits. The librarian, Sarah Hickey, and I also met with Tinker Works, which is based out of Hinsdale, and talked about their programming, their kits, their STEAM lessons. And then we started talking with Project Launch, which is part of, you might have heard Project Lead the Way, which is the older version of it, and started talking with them about their kits, their lessons, their STEAM instruction. We started that process last year, and then this year, what we would like to do is finish exploring those resources. But at the same time, I'm going to be monitoring the development of the science curricular review team, because I'll be looking for potential overlap. So if it turns out that we end up looking at a different science resource, if that science resource has STEAM materials in it, and our classroom teachers are going to end up addressing STEAM, then we don't need to purchase a STEAM, a STEAM resource to do in addition to what we're teaching. If it doesn't incorporate STEAM, then we would want to continue on the path of looking at how can we incorporate STEAM in our students' days. And so if that's the case, and we do look at that, then I would work with the librarians and Sarah Hickey to determine a resource, and then to plan for incorporating instruction at all levels, K through five, and then plan the professional development for the librarians, because right now, the plan is for the librarians to provide the STEAM instruction to students.
How do you plan on vertically aligning it then with the junior high curriculum, the middle school curriculum, which already has a STEAM setup?
So the junior high curriculum is based on, Mr. Henke has based the junior high curriculum on career technical education, and looking at the career clusters that come from the CTE strands. So that's a little bit different than the elementary STEAM programs, which are looking at how are we combining science, technology, and art into an educational experience of some sort. So they're not going to be vertically aligned, it's two different concepts that are being taught at the different levels.
Yeah, I remember at Howser, you could, you could study aviation and different types of aerodynamics, and then robotics, and computer technology, and things like that. So I am really excited about this, just because I think we have some opportunities that really could be exciting for little ones, when they don't get to do this very often. So I'm hoping it goes well, so.
And this is kind of to sort of launch the year, sort of have a sense of the many different sort of strategies, goals, like big ideas that are on, you know, are at play, but there'll, more would come back to the board, of course, in any and all of these areas, as more direction takes shape.
So just to make sure I understood you correctly, it's, you're looking for overlap in, it's defined learning? Is what it, okay. You're looking for the overlap of what defined learning has, and whether it meets the needs, or enough of the needs of these other programs?
For STEAM?
Yeah.
For either defined learning, if that's the route we take, or if we're looking at other science resources for overlap between what STEAM instruction overlap is there between whichever science resource we use, defined learning or something else, and just STEAM instruction. So for instance, if we use defined learning, does it have STEAM lessons? Does it have some type of STEAM instruction? How much is there? How much is being covered? Is it a significant amount where we don't need to worry about another STEAM program?
All right, I'm going to ask a real dumb question. What's the difference between STEAM and science?
Not a dumb question at all.
Because isn't it science, technology?
Yes.
Something arts and math?
Engineering, arts and math, yes. So there isn't really a difference, but the next gen science standards do incorporate some STEAM pieces to it.
Okay. So is STEAM more of like a package of all these things kind of going together in a lesson verse, science, math?
Right.
Art, yeah, okay.
Like an interdisciplinary approach.
Yeah.
Which is what if you were.
Put it all together.
Science.
That's what scientists do anyway. They're reading, they're always reading, they're doing mathematics. So that's, yeah, it's a hard question, though. You're right, like how do you? Now we're doing science, kids, you know, now we're doing English. And I would love to see just all the teachers working on this too. I realize that's a huge training and time issue for the day, but so valuable for them to get ways of talking about things with different types of language, whether it's like engineering, like my, I never had that, you know, as a child where you're doing problems where you're designing something or unless it was like a once a year science project.
I think STEAM, I don't know if it's why it became popular, but it's just designed to be very hands-on and people would argue, well, science should be hands-on too, but I think STEAM almost became the activities themselves are very problem-based, student-led inquiry, you know, figuring stuff out by doing stuff.
Yeah. Real-world type problems, applying your knowledge.
I think that's the goal is to make, you know, adults that have had experiences where they can solve and answer questions and be able to not be stumbled when it's something that they'd never seen before.
Yeah.
So hopefully they would be.
It's more of a holistic, critical thinking mechanism verse just here is science stuff and here is math stuff and yeah, okay, all right.
Which I think is a great question. Thank you for asking because it's just like, it's great for others to understand too why we're looking at STEAM, even though the first word is science.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's why I was like, okay, maybe I'm, let's go throw it out there.
Other science STEAM questions?
Do the librarians need extra training?
They will, absolutely, yep.
I would have guessed.
I mean, it's not their, that's not their realm normally, so yes. But they've been great throughout the conversations of it, you know? It changes hard for everybody and being told you're going to do something outside of your area of expertise is also hard and they've rolled with it. They've been, they've been great. And then the final curricular update I wanted to give is just about health education. So we've talked a little bit here about health education in District 96 and so I wanted to give a more comprehensive view of what health looks like for our students kindergarten through fifth grade. So in the elementary level, our PE teachers teach most of our health units. And those health units cover things like basic body parts and their functions. So looking at the heart, lungs, eyes, ears, nose, things even like your ankles, your knees, your hips, and so forth. They talk about healthy choices like nutrition, exercise, cleanliness, brushing teeth, and growth. They talk about basic body systems like circulatory system, respiratory system, et cetera, and bones and muscles, and then also about healthy and unhealthy foods. Our middle school PE teachers have a five-week health unit for all three grade levels, six, seven, and eight. At sixth grade, they talk about what is health and wellness, communicable and non-communicable diseases, personal health and hygiene, tobacco, bicycle and personal safety and first aid, and environmental health. At seventh grade, the PE teachers cover mental health, stress management, suicide awareness, health careers. They go back to talking about nutrition, also talk about body image and eating disorders, the cardiovascular and respiratory systems, and again, bicycle safety. And then our eighth graders learn about drugs, alcohol, alcohol and steroids, abstinence and contraceptions, STIs, teen pregnancy, and safe haven law. They also learn about muscular and skeletal systems and again, they learn about bicycle safety. By the time they leave for oversight, they're.
They should know about that.
And then we have throughout the district, guest presenters who come and do presentations to address other state mandates. Victor Pacini comes to see kindergarten through eighth grade and does the Be Seen and Heard Program, which is an evidence and research-based sexual abuse prevention curriculum. And that meets the Aaron's Law state mandate that we have to teach. Candor Health comes and teaches puberty one to fifth grade, human reproduction, embryology to sixth grade, science behind drugs, influencers, and teen sexual health, one to seventh grade. And then eighth graders learn the science behind drugs decisions and teen sexual health too. The National Alliance on Mental Illness, NAMI, comes and does Ending the Silence with sixth grade, Stress Less: Resilience for Success with seventh grade, and Stress Less 201: Mental Fitness for our eighth graders. And then Sarah's Inn comes to Hauser and does the Together Strong Project. I don't know a lot of details about that project, but Ms. May is here and she might if you have questions about that one. Sorry. She may not, awesome.
I know it's designed to be about relationship balance in general, sort of.
Thank you.
Understanding power in relationships and healthy balance.
But those, like that's our health, health across K through eighth grade. And so health encompasses many aspects, many areas. We cover it from kindergarten through eighth grade, those areas I discussed. And our PE teachers take care of the bulk of our health instruction. So any questions about health education?
So I'm just wondering, how different or how, are there any substantial changes from last year's program to this year's program?
There are no changes from last year's program to this year's program, not in the units taught between elementary and kindergarten or the presenters who are coming. All the presenters who are coming have been coming for many years now and the programs that they're doing are the same programs they've been doing for at least the past five years.
It's good to know that Candor Health used to be Robert Crown.
That's what I was going to say.
So it is the same.
Thank you, Linda.
The same, the same organization, which is providing the service to our district since my kids were that age, so.
Yeah, that's exactly, the only thing I was going to say is I don't think people realize it's the same group, it's just a different name, so.
I think the other thing, maybe just point out still, like maybe just about the website resources, I mean, we've really tried to make sure that a lot of detail is shared there.
So on the website, and we are still working on the second link, but on the website, under the Curriculum Instruction Department webpage, there's a State Health Mandate tab. And on that tab, when you click on that, you can learn about the Aaron Laws presentation from Victor Pacini as well as all of the Candor Health lessons that are taught. There are links to the Candor Health page that gives descriptions of all the programs that we offer from Candor Health. And there are also links to standards alignment for each Candor Health program and what standards are taught in the program. The Candor Health programs are 90-minute programs. So the puberty one is a 90-minute class. It can't possibly cover all the health standards, so the link on the website will show you which ones each program does cover. There's also a video from the Director of Candor Health that's linked on our webpage where she talks about the programs that are taught, how they haven't changed since the past few years, they haven't changed over the past few years, and again, the types of standards that they cover. And all of those are linked on the webpage under the Curriculum Assessment Instruction Department page.
And our kids used to, I think my daughter, they used to be transported to Robert Crown, but now Candor Health just does it onsite, right?
They come to, yeah, they come to the school and do it. The past couple of years have been virtual, but they do, they do all the programming while our students remain in the district.
Right, they stay here.
So there are parts of the edification as well that parents can opt their kids out of?
Thank you, Dan, yes, I did mean to say that. There is also an opt-out piece to the program and we send a letter home before we're teaching the Aaron's Law piece as well as the Candor Health pieces. We send a letter home of letting parents know that they can contact their building principal to opt their children out.
Does anyone have a question of what does the students experience if they are opted out of that?
They will often, from my previous principal experience, they would often end up helping out in a different classroom or going to help out a teacher that they might work with outside of their classroom. I don't know if either principal has anything that they'd add, either principal who's here has anything they'd add to that students do.
Do you work with the parents to find out also if they have something in mind specific that they would like that child to engage in, whether it be additional math practice or reading or whatever, but if not, yes, Angela's here.
That's the safer house or they come to the LRC or to the office and they're allowed to work on whatever work they might need to do or read for that time period.
Two thoughts. Have we, do the parents express what their thoughts are in pulling their kids out of the designated program?
Often they don't. They just email their principal and say, I don't want my child to participate.
And then to reiterate what you said and what Sherry said, this is Robert Crown, which to be honest, I went to Robert Crown.
They've rebranded to Candor Health.
A number of years ago, we'll say, and the onsite, so no parents would really be surprised at what Candor Health is teaching now.
Correct.
It's pretty similar, maybe it's updated with some new science, but same stuff.
Correct.
But the important thing though is too, if parents don't like it for whatever reason, they can opt out, so that's.
Yes.
I think it's also probably critical here to make the tie to the national sex education standards that there were a couple of different articles that were out there about us adopting it and we've had various emails and things like that in, but there is, there is the national standard and then there's what we're doing. And what we're doing is not equal to the national standard. So just to tie that together, for those that are a little bit mostly upset with some of the new standards that were coming out, we're not adopting a lot of those things that parents have been writing in saying, you know, I don't want my kid participating, how could you do this without board discussion, things like that. The reason we did it is because nothing is changing. It's exactly what we've been doing. So although the national standards have come out, we're not changing any of our own practices.
Correct. And we didn't adopt the national standards in full. We're not teaching the national sex education standards to kindergarten through fourth graders. We are only addressing fifth through eighth and we're addressing it through Candor Health programs, which means that we're only partially addressing the standards. We are not fully implementing the national sex education standards. And that's why pointing out where on the website you can find the link to find out which standards we are addressing goes a long way so that parents can see if the concerns that they might have are being addressed or not through Candor Health's programming.
And moving forward, if we do in subsequent years decide to adjust this programming or implement it in a different way, it would be a very public conversation where we would be discussing that. So wouldn't it be something that we would?
Right.
I just want to make sure that the public knows we'd be very transparent about any adjustments to this program.
It would be an adjustment to curriculum and much like talking about the science review curriculum all last year, talking about the math curriculum review, it would be information I would most definitely bring to the board table so that you're aware of any curricular changes that might be happening.
Questions for Angela?
All right. Thank you.
There may be more questions for you, but no, you're welcome.
Is she done already?
Already.
So the next thing I wanted to share with you is what's labeled here is the draft executive summary related to the key performance indicators. And so what this is, is this is a document that really ties together the five different goal areas that we've been discussing, really, I don't think it's taken us quite five months, but it's taken us a while, right, to look at each goal area, draft KPIs, as you know, each goal champion really came and sat with you and talked about the key performance indicators. And so what you have in front of you then, and it's linked and it's available publicly to anybody who'd want to take a look at it, it's there for your review. I don't know that it merits additional discussion because it should represent the conversation we've already had. The thing I was saying, Angela, sort of seriously and jokingly, is that the one thing that we still haven't quite arrived at is the targets for the academic student achievement goals. So what we talked about in detail, I think it was back in August, you know, which assessments we'd be using, which assessments we'd be looking at as those indicators for us, but we talked about the percentage of children meeting a certain target. We kind of left that as an open-ended, because we want to look at more baseline. Okay, yeah.
Just when you thought.
The one that, a couple of them, so the IAR one still doesn't have a target and that's because we're still working with Don White on the baseline data. Given the pandemic, we're working on what was the data from this previous testing in spring '22. And that data was just released to schools, it's still embargoed. So we continue to work on that piece and then I will be able to work on the target for that goal. And then I think that another one might have been the high school one.
Yes, percentage of students who completed the eighth grade math core class in District will achieve a, yeah.
And that's because we're going to have to use this year as the baseline. So once we, I worked with Mrs. May on placement from this year's eighth graders, then we'll have a baseline for moving forward.
So that's where you see kind of a multiple asterisk listed there. So we'll, we'll be discussing that target over time, but as Angela said, we need more time to analyze the data we have and the data we will be receiving. So you have all that, the idea would be that next meeting, at a regular board meeting on October 19th, this would be presented to you for formal adoption. So I want you to have it now if there's any questions you'd want to ask any of the goal champions or specific to any of the KPIs.
I would say I was a little concerned when we were going through goal one, how many things we were trying to measure, but seeing it in this final format, I feel a lot better about it. Like it's very specific things that we're measuring. It kind of, as we were running through it, it felt like this really laundry list of metrics, but now that I'm seeing it outlined, I'm like, oh, okay, like this is this very targeted thing for this population or whatever it is. So it feels a lot less daunting, I guess, maybe, on what we're trying to do there.
The other thing that I've posted here is what we call Strategic Plan, a draft, again, a scorecard. And so, you know, we've talked about how do you create more visibility on our website? How do we regularly update the community through, really essentially a color-coded system? It would be for each goal champion to really look at, work with their action teams through discussion, say, we're approaching this, we've met this one. I mean, so Full Day Kindergarten is obviously the, probably the clearest example, is that a goal we've met, right? So anyway, want you to take a look at that. I think that's a nice document that does the same, Wesley, that you're pointing out, kind of tries to create a summary version in a sync format that we could share publicly for people that are tracking that, those levels of progress with us. And then the, if you skip down to the F1G, it's the Strategic Plan Goals and Strategies, this is that template, so what we've been referring to is the placemat. We've updated that, that would have those KPIs because they're still draft, we'll wait until the October 19th board adoption of these as kind of that more complete version of our strategic plan. Then we'll wait and laminate it, so. Any questions about any of that?
The only, I like it overall. The only question I had was on goal three for the 3.1, just a clarification more than anything else. So it says, the district will maintain or increase the percent of teachers with master's degree or higher at three-year rolling average as reported by ISBE. So is that just our own data over time or is that comparing it to like state-level data?
You want to take that down?
That's our own data.
Are just, okay, so it's just our own staffing?
We recorded that this gave that we provided state and so it's available on the report card.
Okay.
So that very public state report card, they do report the number of teachers that District 96 has with master's degrees.
Yeah. So do we want to compare, do we want to benchmark ourselves to anybody else or a group of schools or anything like that? Because I don't know what the baseline, I guess I don't know, I don't know if this is good or bad.
Right.
I guess it'd be bad if we lose more experienced teachers, but like what is it compared to? That was, that's my only feedback on that one. Everything else looked pretty good.
Does the state board like provide state averages of that? I'm not sure that's.
Yeah, I don't know. State comparison and then you could sort of by design, you could go and, I mean, they are all publicly available. So we could say like.
You'd have to go look at them.
We often talk about the WSCE districts. Where do we stand in comparison to that? And that would certainly be something we could do and kind of as a refinement to that, that KPI.
But there's not like, when, when they give the student data and they say, this is you compared to the state compared to whatever, they don't do that for staff. It's just, this is your district. Like would we have to manually look all those up? There isn't something you could just go and see like how you compare?
Typically when, and I don't, I don't call this metric exactly, but typically everything that's on the report, there's a comparison to the state average.
Yeah.
So you always have that district compared to the state.
Okay.
So that we have to be able to compare.
Okay, because if it does it for that.
You can go individually since that.
Yeah.
You can go individually since that, you want to isolate certain sets of districts, districts or the whiskey districts.
Yeah.
Their data is up there too.
Right. Yeah, okay.
And it's, it's like with high schools, they'll, you often don't necessarily want to compare yourself to the state because the state's a very large, diverse group of schools. And so the average might be lower than what you were.
Yeah, it might not be like you want to.
Community is, is expecting or what's normal for a community. But so like the whiskey group might be a more sensible, like Martha's talking about, comparison just so it's not such a large difference in size and location and all the resources. So that's.
If, if it's an easy benchmark, like I think we should do some sort of benchmark. If you gotta go look up 40 things every single time, like I don't know if that's worth it. But I was just curious if they're, yeah.
Yeah. I think for me, a good start would just be improvement from where we are and see, because we have new staff members, see what they've brought, where their, what their experience is that often tells you where they're going to go. But yes.
So, so I'm, I'm familiar with SMART goals and I think this is a little different. We're saying, was it smarte?
Smarte goals.
So what is, could some, could you elaborate a little on what the differences or what we're trying to capture?
Sure. So, so the I and the E. So SMART goal is kind of something that I think oftentimes organizations use. And when we were working with CEC, they talked about, we talked about how do we incorporate our equity and opportunity gaps, goal strategy across all. And the suggestion was to identify every goal as a smarte goal. So every goal includes an element of inclusivity and equity as part of our essentially benchmarking and identification of our understanding of progress.
SMART wasn't enough.
SMART wasn't enough.
Well, I know. You want it to be smart for everyone and measurable for everyone and appropriate for everyone and not just.
And we've said we also want to be inclusive and equitable.
Inclusive, right.
I would say we're appropriate for the IE part because I'm not sure how a CPI increase is related to inclusive and equitable. It's a completely different measure when we look at say, elements of goal five that are often tied to budget things.
And Jim and I were talking about that earlier. And often, you know, with the financials, we want to make sure our financial resources are spread out equitably across the district. So yeah, so it's, you know, it pertains and it's, it's also, I think demonstrates an aspiration and a commitment to, you know, ensuring that we are addressing the equity and opportunity gaps across the board. And we made a very conscious decision at the time. We talked, you know, as you know, we formed action teams for each goal strategy area or each goal area. And we really said, do we want to have an equity and opportunity action team? And we felt that everybody had a responsibility to the equity and opportunity gaps. And so that was really kind of a, a team decision or a strategic plan team decision.
Yeah, overall, I think these look really good.
Yeah.
All right. And then, so I shared the scorecard. I shared the, the executive summary. And then just, I'll jump into my goal champion of goal for the family and community partnerships. I have just more information to share with the board. Again, this is not an action item. This is again, sort of a sense of direction and comparison discussion. We had talked about this at the last meeting. As you know, we looked at a proposal that came from West 40 from their new communications department. And we had also, we were familiar that Riverside Brookfield High School and some other districts in the area had also worked with a group called School Perceptions. And the request was for some more information from that group. And I had an opportunity to talk to that group. Really, they are a school survey. They are an educational survey business. And so I think, you know, looking at educational survey really helps you identify your need areas, which is something we are talking about already. We talked about using the Panorama open source materials and doing a family engagement survey. Then the West 40 work becomes kind of how do you address some of the solutions? So if we identify that there's more family and community engagement that we'd like to see happen through survey, the West 40 work kind of helps us identify ways to do more outreach. And so in particular, I think the community report is something we'd really like to lean on the expertise of West 40 for. As you know, we've kind of done that in-house. I think we've done it well, but I think there's some modernization perhaps, or you know, just improvements in people that look at how perhaps communities best digest and engage with that information. We had agreed to do, or we had certainly thought about, maybe not agreed to, but featuring all of you, you know, on the website and making sure that people also know who their Board of Education is and a little bit about you. So that's the photo that's going to come up on October 19th. So those pieces of the West 40 proposal make a lot of sense to me. The strategic plan, we talked about doing a video that sort of tries to incorporate kind of a more visual message around our progress. I, I love that idea. I don't know, like to me, that one could maybe wait. And then the communication audit starts to brush with the school perceptions survey. Would we be better off to look at a more broad-based survey? We are going to survey around family engagement. It's what we said is our key performance indicator. Certainly the question comes up, are we smarter? Would we engage the community to ask even more questions? Do we want to engage them in a more general way around other aspects of our strategic plan as opposed to honing in on kind of that family engagement piece specifically? So I think it's an open-ended question. I don't think there's a right and a wrong, but just would appreciate the core thoughts on that.
At the last meeting, I think I was the one who brought up, what could we look into school perceptions, just as we knew RB was doing it. I think for, for me, looking at the two, what we were trying, like the communications audit, the things that the West 40 are kind of bringing to the table, I think is where we're, we're, I was, I, I think that's more of what we're looking for right now. The school perceptions, while it looks like a great service, I don't know if that's exactly what we need. I, that was just my viewing of it. I.
Like I, I think there was a survey component of the West 40. I guess I was wondering, is there any kind of comparison between the two? Obviously there's difference in price.
Right. Right. And I think, and I'm actually meeting with West 40 on Friday, I think just to get more clarity around what they mean by their audits. Because I think the audit and the survey potentially are more similar. The others are more, like I described as products, like products that West 40 could help us with and do them in a even more professional, engaging way. This is a big community report, board member feature.
Yeah, I would love to, when you find out about that audit. Cause I, I mean, I'm thinking of it a little bit differently as an auditing of how are we communicating and not necessarily surveying the fam, you know?
Yeah. I think the audit, I think, right, I'll say like, do you, do you survey your families and ask, you know, sort of trying to get essentially a status, it's essentially a satisfaction survey. We know that five essentials is also that. It's also just, for years and years, and we are not the only school district that feels this way. People don't feel that five essentials is the most meaningful survey. So what school districts do is then they create their own or work with a group like School Perceptions. I asked them why they're not an allowable alternative to five essentials.
Yeah, right, right.
They're not. The state's really tight about that, about which, you know, which are those alternatives? So, so yeah, it's, it's again, I think it's food for thought. I'll find out more about the West 40 piece. We have this family engagement survey through open source, meaning free. You know, we would still be paying some fee to kind of just help us.
Yeah. At a certain point, I don't think we want to just keep surveying people over and over. I think we want to actually, you know, make some actions to make the larger communication strategy better or, or products that help us in that.
And that's really why we started, how we started down this path, right? Is after more board discussion and just as being identified goal, the strategic plan is how are we engaging families? But also then there was just this, how are we engaging families in, in general? From the board table, from the district office, from each local school. So, yeah.
Just to say that in general, supporting what Linda's saying is we, we have the strategic plan. There was an element of survey and community, community participation in that that generated some, I'll call it answers to some of the questions that School Perceptions is looking at. I, our focus is better on the communication aspect and, and the value of the free survey and some very specifically targeted questions that we're looking at. This seems a little more general.
Yeah. And a lot of times I think people might use School Perceptions and we do not do not, do not have a referendum on our, you know, I'll just be clear about that. But sometimes, you know, it's when you're really seeking out information about, maybe it's a major facilities project, maybe it's a referendum, you know, often something that's going to require taxpayer dollars. You know, Full Day Kindergarten, we had what, 700 families that responded to that survey and that was a very high response rate. And we learned, and we learned a lot through that. And it really, I think, helped us with our decision making.
Thank you. That actually helps. I think this School Perceptions and what they're looking at would be more valuable in five years.
I was just going to say.
When we have a strategic plan that is theoretically fairly well implemented.
Yeah.
What is, what is the result of that?
Cause like the next time we, the next iteration of a strategic, strategic plan, that might be a great service to do before that. But I feel like we're maybe two steps in and just maybe doing more actionable, trying to reach, you know, the, the goals that are in, or the, you know, strategies that are in goal four already. How can we, you know, implement that? Thank you for looking into it though. I know I was the one who asked you, who brought it up and I just.
It was, it was very interesting to talk to them. So thank you for suggesting that. And it was interesting that there is a group that is dedicated just to, you know, educational surveys, really for school systems.
It was neat to see, see the price as well. So you know, like, you know, what's included.
Which honestly isn't terrible.
No.
You can charge a lot more than that for survey companies.
Oh.
In some cases, but I think, yeah, I don't disagree with any of that. But I do think if we want to do targeted surveys, we really should think about doing third parties, doing it. Just for a couple of the reasons that they point out here, having that third party in it, kind of, there was something in here about the bias of the survey and like how the surveyors are thinking about how it got put together. And so coming from a third party, also writing third, surveys is really difficult. I mean, it's like one of the biggest things I remember from college is a marketing class I took and we had to create a survey and I, like, it was probably the hardest thing I had to do. Just like you had to craft the words in a certain way so that it's not biased and it's interpreted right. And it's really difficult to do those things. So if we, if we do want some really good targeted data, I would, I would recommend going with some sort of third-party vendor. But I hear what you're saying. Linda, just kind of assessing how we do what we're already doing better versus trying to gather feedback. But if we ever do want to do a, a survey, try to get it, I think we should probably look at, whether it's them or somebody else, assistance on it. And I like the benchmarks too, where like they can give you other data. Cause I, what do you do with it if you don't know what you're comparing it to? How do you know whether it's good or bad or whether you should take action or not and stuff like that?
I think we could recommend that to the state or whoever writes the five essentials. No offense to them, but as a parent, it is so poorly written, worded. It's just. Yeah, you all know, having taken it.
And we try, we really do. Our principals try to really digest it, district office team, we really do try. And then we, we find ourselves looking at the participation rate. Did that question really make sense?
Small.
Yeah. Yeah. We'll keep, and we'll keep looking at it because it is a required survey. So, you know, we'll stop. All right. So thank you for that feedback. That's very helpful.
It is interesting. It's a, like it's required that we send it, but it's not required that anybody fills it out. I mean, I don't know how you make that a mandate.
They will penalize our results. That's right. 30%?
I mean, it's 20.
20%? Yeah. Cause I was looking at our numbers just the other day.
So now it's like every, every, every year of survey time, it's every week, it's, we're almost a 20, we're almost a 20. 20% is nothing. So anyway.
I think we're ready to pass it on to Ms. Gunn, Ms. Gunn for policy.
All right.
Thank you.
That's 50 educational comments tonight. And we will pass it on to policy.
Yeah. So for policy, it's not so much as an update, it's just kind of opening it up for just some board discussion. You might recall after our self-evaluation in August, there was discussion with IASB about this resource or a, a method by which we could more routinely monitor our policies. This does not, you know, take the place of what we already subscribe to at press or press plus, which I think keeps us like really tight on our policies, ensuring that we're familiar with updates, whether significant or just, you know, footnotes, five-year reviews specific to our, our policy manual. I know that they offer some different versions, like a more traditional kind of one-year plan, a two-year plan, kind of a more hybrid model. So there's a little bit of flexibility. I also just want to mention, you know, just the cognizance of our time at the board table and the utilization of our time. I think what this does allow for is perhaps more familiarity, in real-time familiarity with our policies, kind of consistently being put in front of us. And they are, the cadence of it does sort of touch upon what is going on at that time. So certain policies would be reviewed around the time that you're approving budgets or certain policies would be reviewed around the time of the superintendent eval. And likewise, when you're bringing in new board members around elections and seating, there'd be those relevant policies. But yeah, just kind of looking for insight or thoughts from the board about whether something like this might be useful. Again, this would be in addition to any press updates that come up, press plus. So I don't know, Martha, if you had anything else to add on it.
You just said it well.
So many years ago, when I was a policy chair, we had a very similar, that was, it was just a thing that was presented in like the monthly ISB magazine. And it was something that we kind of talked about in the committee of the whole, like when, when the policy committee meets outside of the board meeting and it would kind of just, the policy chair would kind of review those policies, look them over. Is there any questions? Is there anything we should highlight to the board? And then that was brought to the board as opposed to maybe like, hey, everybody read all of section three this month, which is a bit of an onus on the policy chair. I understand that. But I don't know if that's a way to do it. Or just to even send a email out to board members saying, it's March and we should really look at section three. Everybody, when you have a second, log in to, you know, the board book or the board policy manual and, and review. I don't know if it necessarily has to be like a, something that's actionable at a meeting. I think it more so, for me, seems to be like something that is educational and something that board members should be making sure they stay on top of.
Yeah.
But a coordinated effort. So policy chair would say, it's August and we're going to look at this section, highlighting maybe these two. It'd be great for you to, to read those and understand. Any questions? We can bring to the meeting. That's what I kind of think might be the best.
I like that. I, I think that's more, well, it's more member-friendly in my opinion. But I also think having it be timely, if there are any, any brand new federal issues or state issues that really are something we've never dealt with, to have everyone say, hey, take a look at this, this is new. And obviously the press would update us towards those things because they're not boilerplate. But I, I think that'd be good.
I think for me, it's more so like educational for the board member to make sure they're going through this.
More familiarity, educational.
Yeah.
Right. And it's not, it's not a huge, like a data dump of just thousands of pieces.
Just have, yeah, better like understanding and grasp on what our working policies are day to day. And just that, again, if we, if we go down this route, you know, adopting whether it's yearly, I mean, I kind of liked it more in the yearly cadence, particularly if you had board member, new board members coming on or somebody only got half of it and then their term was over. So I kind of liked the ease of annual, annual. And again, just the relevance of the things that we are deciding or working on as it pertains to those policies. And when you're in your fourth year of service, you probably don't have to read as much. You know, you might want to refresh and all that, but it, you know, once you've, you know, gone through it, you kind of have the ideas of what's, you know, what's.
Especially if they're up for review and you, it just a matter of, it's our three-year and five-year review. And so that it comes much more quickly.
Do you recall when, and I should know this, Kathy, maybe it's in our records, when we started engaging with the press policy review cycle? Was that in place when Sherri and Linda, when you came on the board?
We've always used press.
Yeah.
At least for the.
I remember we did that when I took over from Linda.
Yeah.
I think press does a nice job of certainly keeping us in compliance and making sure we're, you know, we're in compliance, you know, that we know of any significant legislative changes that have policy impact. So I, I think the, as Stephanie said, I think the, you know, the additional review cycle would be just if there's a desire for greater familiarity. I know you adopt, you know, approve, and then they are put away in the policy manual. Some that refers to policy regularly for implementation, our policies are very up-to-date. You know, I, I don't encounter one that's like, oh, we forgot to update that one, or that doesn't really work for us because that's not consistent with our implementation. So I feel, I'm very comfortable with our policy status. But I think this is just to a question if the board just, again, as Steph said, that added familiarity, is it, is it worth that additional?
I think it's more worth it for a new board member than for someone that's already looking at it. But that's just my opinion.
Just that from an educational perspective, I appreciate what Linda was saying. I think as, as a recommendation or a guideline to the board of, just as a suggestion, this is, and maybe including that in, in board book. So here are these policies for your review. No action. So here are these policies for your review, no action, nothing pending on this, but just as for an educational perspective.
Or could you just be a comment by the policy chair saying, it's March, board members reviewed section three, there were no, you know.
No action.
Unless, it seems that the policy chair is always a new board member. It just seems to be how it always works. So it's almost a
I got the hazing.
You got out of that, yeah. It always seems to be a nice, like, I know I use this, something like this, for my own education, because I was like, I'm the policy chair, and I don't, you know, like, so I really was following that cadence.
Until you were like chipping away, I understand.
Yeah, just to get through the year, like, oh, you're right, it's evaluation time, let's look at these, it's budget time, you know. So I think it's, but I do think an email to the board just saying, hey, it's this month, we should look at these, is a nice reminder, and you might, you know, people might be more inclined to then refresh their memories.
And this is every other month. I mean, you could
Yeah, there's some
You could break it down to every single month to just make it smaller, too. So I think, I don't think we need to talk about it every single time, but
Yeah.
Review these, bring questions. We could put it as an agenda item or whatever, however we need to do it to make it official board business, but.
Or questions just go to, you know, Stephanie and Martha.
Yeah.
So, so they, you would like to create kind of this, some regular review cycle, but it would really be the policy chair that would kind of carry the
Yeah, kind of coordinate, like, point us in the right direction. Because it is interesting, because it's like July is section four, and then September is section two, and then November is section six. So clearly, there's things in those policy groupings that match up with that
Yeah, like annual budget deadlines is like four, and then the three is like superintendent eval, any evaluation of like other administrative. And then the other, I think, is just the board policy, section probably two, yeah, two, within the first six months of board election. So they're not like chronological for exact, for good reason.
But you could probably do section two, I mean, depending on how many policies are in it, section two could be September, half of it, October, half of it, November, if it's small, you know, just do it all. So yeah, I think, I think just a general awareness, like what Linda was saying, would be helpful, because I don't, I don't just bust out my policy manual on a regular, random basis and read it. So there's usually a reason I go to it.
It makes its appearance on Zoom every now and again, right?
That's where I rely on Martha.
Pretty close to my, yeah.
I guess you remember policy chairs.
That's why, yeah.
This is really for you.
Copy for their
This education is
You're right, you're helping me, I appreciate it.
I mean, this is helpful feedback. Is there additional or thoughts? It sounds like people are inclined.
Silly question, I'm pretty sure I know the answer to, but this is essentially part of our member benefits we get correct. There's no additional charge.
I don't fully lose any additional fees that I
I think it would really just be internal work. It would just be the work of, you know, the policy chair to say, we're reviewing section three, you know.
Yeah, and we would just access our policies through the web.
Yeah, this would be nothing to do with press.
Thanks, Kim.
Yeah, this is just, this is the pre, like a predetermined suggestion that's part of press. Because I remember, I think, didn't, didn't they go over this in the new board member review thing? Yeah, there's like the big booklet, and I remember there's like a chart of like, we suggest you do these things in these months. I think it's very similar to that. So this is something we would have to engage with. This is just a suggestion that you pulled from the
Like a practice for the board to engage.
Yes, yeah.
And I would say, Stephanie, you just pick the plan or option that are presented that is
That works best.
That you feel is most logical.
And I guess the other question, too, was, I mean, you can technically, the way that it's presented, jump in at any time, because it's not chronological. So, you know, would we be more inclined to just begin its potential adoption or implementation sooner rather than later? Would we want to wait until what I see as, in my mind, as a fiscal year start is like the July start? I mean, is there, are there thoughts on that? Particularly if there are new board members coming on?
I was actually thinking more start when the new board members are inducted.
Following the kind of traditional approach.
Definitely would be helpful for them, yes.
Should start in the spring?
Yes.
So I don't need to
Welcome. Well, we'll see, maybe, yeah, you have to.
Is it May?
May would be the official season.
So section
Well, in a way, it's a good thing that it's June, because instructional work would have calmed down, and there would be more time for that in the agenda, so. I mean, if you're gonna put it somewhere, that's where I'd put it as board member.
That meeting in May would be like a reorganization meeting.
In the summer, early summer, so that you get the new board members there, but you're not cluttering up your instructional time.
Reading on our own, so I think it should start as they start, because then it's like a good basis of what they're doing.
I just mean, for sure, by the end of the year, so that, you know, with board members reading all this stuff during
Stephanie went through a pretty robust orientation. We've increased the orientation over, over the years.
I do wonder if it's gonna be back in person now, because mine was a hundred percent on virtual.
But we all met like at the district office.
Oh, yes, yeah, I went to the district. I thought, the required training.
I'll just say personally, I don't see any reason we couldn't just start now, because if it's a cyclical thing, I mean, that's another six, seven months, and then you're gonna go through that cycle immediately again, but I don't really care, so.
I would agree. I mean, it is a suggestion, essentially. There are no tests.
According to this, October's blank. So November, section six, I mean, it's up to you guys, what you want to do, but.
I think we'll leave it to Stephanie.
Yeah.
Whatever you want to do.
There's no like formal, I mean, there's nothing that we need to do, so we want to begin this practice.
Recommendation, sure.
But we would place it under policy committee, I think, in a cowl to say
This is what we've reviewed, and if there are questions, or if there was anything we noticed or wanted to bring to discussion during our review of probably our more thorough review of the policies. But I also like what you were saying, Trina, I had not thought about that. When the, when press does come out, you know, for some of us, like, maybe that's the first time we're looking at the policy a really long time, and so it'll be, you know, fresh in our minds, perhaps, because we will have at least come across it maybe once, before it's up for some formal, you know.
Yeah.
It's good, especially as a new board member, it'd be good to be familiar with these things and just be introduced to them before you have to vote on it.
Yeah, no, I appreciate hearing everybody's thoughts. I wasn't sure what you thought.
Start in the spring or start immediately, or we're letting Stephanie decide that.
Letting me, yeah, take a, take a look at it.
Whatever you decide, I will.
Leave it to Stephanie.
No, I mean, I, we can start it, but I do want to, again, I see this more as a, you know, there are some months that are kind of blank, and so I would want to perhaps be mindful of, you know, just being flexible. If a press update comes out that month, that's not the month where I'm like, hey, and in addition, review these just for the fun, educational aspect. You know, so I don't have to stick to this as strictly. I think it's a good guideline.
Those attorneys are very busy with, I don't understand how, why they have some of those edits in sometimes, but they are, they're there, and so.
A lot of footnote changes.
Can you imagine being in that room?
Okay. Well, thank you. I will circle back with everyone on our plan to implement going forward. That was it. That falls under policy right now.
All right. Thanks, Stephanie. Okay, next is facilities.
There was a brief presentation last week to the BLYTH PTA. Those improvements, there were not significant questions. PTA seemed generally from Martha's presentation in support. And we have a facilities committee meeting Friday. And we will be seeing bids for BLYTH Park coming in soon as well.
All right, good to know. All right, thanks, Joel. Wes?
Nothing for discussion tonight. Martha and I did meet last week, I think, talked about a few things, but nothing that's like ready to kind of bring to the table or anything urgent at this point.
All right. We did not get to David in time for the finance committee. That would have been a record-setting meeting if we would have got there. All right, so that brings us to public comment. Has there been any additional public comment?
I don't think I've seen anybody come inside.
Okay. All right, in that case, then, future meeting dates are October nineteenth, 2022, regular business meeting, 7:00 PM, in the Hauser Learning Resource Center. The board will enter into closed session at 6:15 PM if necessary, and return to open session at 7:00 PM. November second, twenty, 2022, committee of the whole, 7:00 PM, in the Ames Multipurpose Room. November sixteenth, 2022, regular business meeting, 7:00 PM, in the Hauser Learning Resource Center. The board will enter into closed session at 6:15 PM if necessary, and return to open session at 7:00 PM. And if there is nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.